Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Jackson Public School Board of Trustees Meeting is now called to order. Board, we have, how many members present? We have four members present. So that is a four. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we will accept the agenda as printed. All in favor?
Aye.
There being none, no nays, the motion is approved. We have all had an opportunity to review the minutes outline. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes as presented?
Madam Chair, I so move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
There are no nays, there being none, the motion is approved. Now, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Mrs. Hilliard, good evening, Board members, to all of the Team JPS members, our community members, those who have joined us here in the meeting. Appreciate your being here. We will begin, as we typically do, with JPS news from our instructional television team.
In an effort to expand access to its high-quality pre-kindergarten program, the Jackson Public School District received a $9 million early learning collaborative grant to educate more than 1,200 early scholars over the next three years. JPS will use these state matching funds to administer, implement, monitor, and evaluate its pre-K program and improve the quality of educational experiences offered to four-year-old scholars. Jim Hill High Scholar Janai White prepared a soul food lunch for her fellow peers and members of the JPS administration on April 20. The day's menu consisted of crispy fried chicken, yams, greens, her famous Mississippi macaroni and cheese, and cornbread. During the 2020 quarantine, Janai started a catering business and restaurant called The Flavor Trap out of the necessity to put her talents to good use while staying safe at home. Janai was allocated $5,000 to prepare lunch for her classmates with the assistance from Jim Hill's Child Nutrition Team. Registration is underway for returning scholars at all JPS schools. To register, all you have to do is log into your Active Parent account. You can access Active Parent on the JPS website by logging into the JPS mobile app. All scholars must be registered for next school year to be accepted into the JPS Summer Enrichment Program. If you have any questions about registration, please call Enrollment Services at 601-960-8852, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Congratulations to the 2022 graduating class of the Jackson Tugalu Early College High School. These 19 outstanding scholars received an associate degree May 1st and will also receive a high school diploma later this month. They are the first group of JPS scholars to achieve this remarkable milestone. The graduates also received over $8 million in scholarships. Get the district's official mobile app in your app store today. Get access to news, events, the district directory, and even our donor choose site right in the palm of your hand. You can customize your experience by selecting which schools you want to follow. You will enjoy having access to our great tools in one amazing app. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools and on Twitter at JPS District.
As always, we want to thank the team for developing a high-quality highlights reel. And it's just always nice to see so many wonderful activities happening throughout the district. Board members, Sunday, May 1st, was National School Principals' Day. I don't know if you all knew that. We observed the day yesterday, but I want to again thank our amazing school leaders for all that they do to support our scholars. These talented professionals serve as the lead learners in their school sites while also collaborating with leaders across the district to ensure that all of our scholars meet with success. They work tirelessly on behalf of our scholars and teams. They often get beaten down by those who don't quite understand the weight and the challenges of their job, and they certainly don't receive enough thanks for all that they do to support our scholars. And so I, for one, am very thankful to work with such a talented group of educational leaders, and our entire district owes them a debt of gratitude. Would you please join me in giving our outstanding JPS school leaders a round of applause? Thank you. And now for our teachers. This year's Teacher Appreciation Week seems to hit just a little differently as we have fight to emerge from this worldwide pandemic and to do the magic tricks and cartwheels and headstands to support our scholars and schools and communities. While there have been many challenges along the way, our teachers have remained committed to ensuring JPS scholars have the tools that they need to reach their full potential. While most communities across the country are bemoaning the learning gaps and dips in academic achievement, we're actually optimistic about the academic improvements that we expect due to the quality instructional practices provided by our JPS teachers. And while we applaud the legislature for increasing the pay of Mississippi teachers, we know that they deserve that and much, much more. We're excited to celebrate our teachers this week. We honor and thank them for going beyond the call of duty to make a positive and lasting impact in the lives of our scholars. Please join me now in thanking our JPS teachers. And again, we'll be celebrating our teachers. You see the flyer here. We'll be celebrating, have been, and will continue to celebrate our teachers each day with some different activities and ways of recognizing. But please, 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 for all those who are listening, all those who are here in the room or maybe listening livestream or what have you, you don't have to wait on us to show some love to your teachers or to your school principals. So if you have it in your heart, give them a call, shoot them a text or email, drop them a line, drop them some treats. We never get enough of cupcakes and donuts and coffee and all that sort of thing, so if it's in your heart to do it, please do, and know that our amazing educators do appreciate the love and support that we share with them. Board members, the Murrah High School Pleiades Literary Magazine was recently named Best Literary Magazine in the State by Mississippi Scholastic Press Association. And while this is the, these are the most recent accolades that they've received, they've actually received many accolades over several, several years. If you've not taken the time, if you've not seen the publication, if you've not had a chance to really take in the talent and the skill and the dedication that's demonstrated there, please do. These young people and, of course, the educators who are working to support them just do a marvelous job of expressing themselves creatively through writing, but also pushing our thinking as they are writing about any number of topics. So at this time, I want to invite Murrah High School teacher Sarah Ballard, who will join us and share a bit more about the Pleiades Literary Program, and to introduce three award-winning scholars. It's good to see you.
Hello, 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 everybody. Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Sarah Ballard. I'm a teacher at Murrah High School, and I'm the sponsor of the literary magazine, The Pleiades. And at this time, I would like to ask my principal, Dr. Buchanan, to come up and join me. And I would like to introduce you to two amazing creative scholars that I get to work with from our high school. One of our scholars couldn't be here, but I'm going to introduce you to Maya McFadden and Karis McGowan. Okay, so these, every year, along with other Murrah teachers and teachers from around the state, we help students submit original writing to the Scholastic Writing and Art Program and Competition, which is a national competition. It is highly competitive and very prestigious award program for creative writing and the arts. This year, Murrah High School students were awarded 34 Scholastic Regional Keys. Yes, it was awesome. And those ranged from honorable mention, silver keys, to gold keys, which is the highest. Of the students who entered the competition, the three students, the two who are here along with another student, Dion Heinz, won national keys on the national level, and that is who we are here celebrating today. I'm going to start with Maya. Maya McFadden won a national gold key for her senior portfolio of short stories called The Boss Family. This is a first for us at Murrah High School, and it's only the second time a Mississippi student has won a gold key for her portfolio.
Wow.
And not only that, Maya is being flown to New York City this summer, where she is going to be recognized onstage at Carnegie Hall. But I am so proud of her. I have been, had the honor to be working with her and see her writing from when she was a freshman at Murrah High School. She is dedicated to the craft, and she has truly set her heart on becoming a writer, and she's really doing it. So it's been a thrill, and we are so proud of you, Maya. Okay, next we have Karis McGowan. She is a sophomore, and this is her first time entering the Scholastic Writing Competition. And her poem, Song of Myself, which she wrote, went on to win a gold key on the regional level. But what is also amazing about this poem is they selected it to be what is called an American Voices nominee, which meant out of all the poems that were submitted for Mississippi, they felt her poem was one of the best to represent the voice of her generation. So that poem went on. That poem went on to compete nationally, and she was awarded a silver key. And here's Dion. Yay, good one. He made it just in time. And this is Dion Heinz, the third scholar that I would like to introduce you to. Dion Heinz is what I would call a Scholastic superstar. Dion has, Dion is a double threat. Dion is both a writer and an artist, and has won nine keys in writing. And I don't even know how many he won in art. Thirteen in art. That is how talented Dion is. And then one of Dion's poems went on nationally to also be awarded a silver key. So we are so proud of Dion. All three of these students are on the staff of The Pleiades. Dion is our editor this year. Maya is a senior editor of short fiction, and Karis is on the staff. And so our book for this year is going to print as we speak. We're finishing up getting it printed, and you should look for it to be coming out in the next couple of weeks. But thank you so much for having us, Dr. Green, and congrats to these scholars. And the family of these scholars are also here, and we just want to say thank you so much for all of your support because we know that it takes a family, a whole community, for these students to do what they're able to do. And so thank you, parents, for being here and for helping them and letting them stay and do all the things that they do.
with their writing. So we clapped a few times for our scholars, and deservedly so. Please, 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 let's have a huge round of applause for our educators and specifically To know that we've got a nationally award-winning program right here in our district, and not just a flash in the pan awards this year, but ongoing, consistently winning awards and consistently putting us on the map. I just, I'm grateful for the work that you all are doing. Thank you so much for providing our young people with these amazing experiences. And it's getting hard to keep track of who to listen out for and watch for in the news because I know somebody's going to be some major international correspondent, or an anchor, or writer, or author, whatever they put their minds to. And so, y'all, please help us to remember who, as they graduate and move on into their lives, who we should be keeping our eyes out for because something tells me they're going to be doing some pretty amazing things. All right. Thank y'all so much for giving me an opportunity to just send some love and love on our young people for these amazing talents and accomplishments. Tonight, Board members, we celebrate an exceptional team member who consistently exhibits our core values and service. This team member has proven to be invaluable, and I don't use that word lightly, invaluable to Team JPS. At this time, I want to invite our Director of Planning and Evaluation, Mrs. Latoya Blackshear, to the podium, as she will join us to introduce this outstanding team member.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Green.
Evening.
Members of the Board, fellow colleagues, and community members. So it gives me great pleasure and honor to stand before you and make this presentation. So at this time, I would like for Mr. Jimmy Coleman to come forth.
Make him stand in the middle, like we do everybody else.
So Jimmy has served Jackson Public School District for more than 30-plus years. He has worked for several leaders in various roles throughout his career. However, he currently serves as a data analyst in the Office of Data and Accountability. As you know, data has changed the face of our district over the last several years. We deal with massive data volumes, and a lot depends on our ability to glean meaningful insight from the data. We have only one data analyst for the entire district. So let me say that again. One data analyst for the entire district, and he is charged with many tasks, such as writing queries to extract data for primary and secondary sources, and preparing Excel sheets for the stakeholders to understand. The data extract provided by Jimmy enables us to make critical decisions based on various facts and trends for the entire district. Daily, even throughout the day, Jimmy receives a number of requests regarding data. The majority of the data requires an immediate turnaround, yet he completes each request with a smile and manages to meet all deadlines. Even when Jimmy was in the hospital, he had his laptop in his lap distributing data. I personally appreciate Jimmy's leadership in the department, his continued excellence, and his growth mindset as we continue to develop the Office of Data and Accountability. So at this time, I ask that, ladies and gentlemen, please join me for a round of applause for the Mr. Jimmy Coleman. So at this time, at this time, I will also be remiss if I don't acknowledge members of his family that took the time out today, his wonderful wife, Janora Coleman, who is also a teacher in Jackson Public School. And of course, members of the Data Accountability, Ms. Trace Bryant, the research analyst.
So when we originally created this, or when we created this program, this recognition, it wasn't intended to be a surprise to folks, but I love that we are surprising our team members. These folks are working so hard and just dutifully doing whatever they were asked to do, and I'm assuming he was here to be part of a presentation or something, only to find out that he was the presentation. Just quickly, Mr. Coleman's name, there are few people around our district who you just hear their name called often because they're supporting something. There are those people who are just always in something, supporting in some way, helping behind the scenes to make things happen or to give you what you need. And very early on, I was hearing this name, Jimmy Coleman, Jimmy Coleman. Well, I've asked this from Jimmy Coleman, Jimmy Coleman has provided this. Like, who is this Jimmy Coleman? And why isn't he superintendent? Really excited to have you and just appreciate all that you've done for so many years here in Jackson Public Schools. We appreciate you, brother. Lastly, Board members, as was mentioned in the highlights video, on Sunday, May 1st, 19 Jackson Tugalu Early College High School scholars graduated, or from the inaugural class, graduated from Tugalu College with their associate's degree. What's more, the JPS-Tugalu Partnership is a rare opportunity for our scholars to continue their education and earn four-year degrees. I'm so proud of these scholars for demonstrating what can be done when we just believe in our scholars and their undying potential. We invited them to our next board meeting, and so we'll talk a bit more about the program and hear some more from them then, but Sunday was just a magical time, and we were so thankful to the Tugalu community for embracing our scholars as Tugalu students and as they completed this piece of their formal education. And so, kind of cool that they actually got their associate's degree before they are getting their high school diploma, but, you know, those are minor details. The fact is, they did the work, and we're so excited to celebrate them. And the whole community, the whole convention center, was clearly wrapping their arms around our scholars and proud of them just as we are proud of them. So huge round of applause for them. And with that, Vice President Hilliard, Board members, this concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Green. You always bring good news for us, and we really appreciate it. Let me also congratulate the Murrah Group. You know, that's my field, and it's just so exciting to see that students are interested in that kind of work. So congratulations to the students and their leader, Dr. Buchanan, for job well done. Also, congratulations to the, all of the teachers, the administrators, all of you for the work that you're doing in the district, and we will see you, you hear from us, yes. Okay, let's move on. I think the next thing on the agenda, public participation. Attorney.
Board members, we have several persons who have signed up to address you this evening. I'll start with Dr. Ivory Phillips, who wants to address you regarding JPS vacant buildings.
Greetings again.
Greetings.
There were several of us who were very proud to note that the lease agreement with Midtown was not on the agenda. We're not sure whether that means it's a dead issue or whether it's just temporarily suspended, but we were pleased. Just want to make three points. Number one, I'm not sure how aware you are of the deception that went into the gathering of the petitions that supported that request. At least one person pointed out a number of people who had signed a petition. One of the things that happened is that one of the persons who was carrying those petitions around spoke to the audience about filling empty buildings, but not about moving a school into the building. Secondly, there was no mention of the fact that the vast majority of the people who signed those petitions were not members of Midtown, but from across the city of Jackson. I point out those deceptions because they're simply a part of the pattern of the national movement for charter schools. I'm sure you're aware, because you were sitting there receiving the pressure, that a tremendous pressure was put on board members and administrators to sign that agreement. I hope you never have to go through that kind of pressure again to support an idea that, number one, you know is not in the best interest of JPS and that oftentimes is at heart with your consciousness. I also hope that you don't have to go through this again because there will never be another time when there will be a lot of vacant buildings, and there will not be a time because there will be programs and services that have been developed that can be offered in those buildings. There are a number of us in the audience and around this city who have been long-term supporters of JPS. I have been there for 60 years or so. We are not about to turn our backs on JPS, and we will do whatever is possible to help us to develop the program and services that can fill those buildings, and they'll never be vacant again.
Next is Baba Lukada, Building Usage Issue.
I too want to offer greetings once again. I want to make a little observation. That being- I want to make a little observation, that being that in 1968, Dr. Margaret Walker founded the Institute for the Study of History, Life, and Culture of Black People. That institute is now known as the Margaret Walker Center. Most of us who are black folks who lived black history know that Dr. Walker was studying the historical oppression of black folks under white domination. Most of us who live black culture realize that the Margaret Walker Center would study the repression of black culture and the appropriation of black culture under a white-dominated society. Most of, most of us who live a black life see the hypocrisy of American democracy as democracy is applied to black citizens in Mississippi and throughout America. Anyone who understands Margaret Walker's need to establish the center realizes that the studying that she wanted us to do was to seek change in the social norms of a white-dominated society. Anyone who understands the need to establish the Margaret Walker Center realizes that the 2013 House Bill Number 369, known as the Mississippi Charter School Act of 2013, by Representatives John Moore and a Republican and Deborah Dixon, a Democrat, was a twenty-first year, a twenty-first century act of white domination. So as we look at building on the legacy of Margaret Walker Alexander, Meghna Evers, Vernon Damer, Wallace Jackson, Fannie Lou Hamer, Reverend George Lee, Dr. Gilbert Mason Senior, we realize that we must fight against the 2013 House Bill 369 and not encourage or support charter school expansion in Jackson nor throughout the state of Mississippi. Please allow me to reiterate the stanza that I read before from, for my people. For the cramped but bewildered years we spent, we went to school to learn, to know the reasons why, the answers to, the people, who, the places, where, the days, when, and in memory of the bitter hours when we developed, when we discovered we were black, poor, and, and small, and different, and nobody cared, and nobody wondered, nobody understood. Let me also reiterate that we must not encourage nor support expansion of charter schools in Jackson nor throughout Mississippi. There are better alternatives. Finally, let me just remind you that according to the district's report card for 2021, the graduation rate in this state, or the state rate, was eighty-seven point seven. In our district, it was seventy-six, or seventy, seventy, seventy-eight point eight. That means we got twenty percent of our scholars who did not complete their education. There are other things we can do with those schools. Thank you.
Next is Leon Bracy, public and charter private school funding and building use.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Green, but lucky, hey, everybody. When I first heard about, you know, some of the things that's going on in, in our school system, I was taken aback, to say the least. I'm Leon Bracy, born on Mobile Avenue here in Jackson, Mississippi. I'm a proud graduate of the first African-American high school public in the state of Mississippi. That would be the linear high school bulldogs affectionately known as the 833 Nation. It took me back because one of the things hit me was this saying says, "The more things seem to change, the more they stay the same." So, Dr. Green, I know you're relatively new, you know, to the area and whatnot, but as I thought back on my own public school education here in Jackson, it always seems to be that we always are getting the short end of the stick. Now, as far as the buildings are concerned, there are organizations that are talking about things that can be done better than what is being suggested by these private schools. And let me tell you why we got a bulldog in this fight, because one of the things that happened to me as a student here in Jackson, they made us move from our school. Everyone that lives south of Woodrow Wilson, we had to go to Enix. Everyone that lived north of Woodrow Wilson, they had to go to Harding. They separated us. But as I look back on it, look, that, that was a grand plan, as I understand it now, my old age. One of the biggest hot messes you ever wanted to see was how they did that, and we were uprooted from our schools, we were uprooted, you know, just like overnight. When we did return, it still was a hot mess. They fired teachers and coaches or reassigned them. We never saw them again. So it kind of broke up a kind of continuity that I think is very important. She said, "I got one minute, let me do this in fifty-five seconds." One of the things that I used to hear about was separate but equal. No, it wasn't. We used to get old books with people's names in it, boogers in them, everything. They was funky, and they're saying this is separate but equal. But these were our, our books, and, and they were not new, and they had been used by, I think, the white students, and then we were getting these as secondhand books, and they were getting, you know, the new books. What happens here in Mississippi, and what has happened for a while, is that private schools had been funded with public school money. I'll say this, and I'm gonna sit down. I think MAKE needs to be fully funded so that we can direct the resources needed in order for us to really grow our scholars, and I say it like this, SOSDDD, same old stuff, different doggone day. All I'm saying is this, maybe we need to rethink our resources and to put them in where we can actually grow our scholars and we can become a more prominent school district and a better school district. I worked for the Department of Education. Okay, I worked for the Department of Education for twenty-two years, and I visited just about every school district in the state, and I want you all to know we can do better. God bless you, and thank you.
Finally, it's Thomas Jenkins, Charter Schools versus JPS.
Evening, everybody. My name is Thomas Jenkins. I'm a pastor here in the city, also a community advocate person. Today, I just want to talk a little bit about the fact that the JPS versus our charter schools. During the school year of 2021, seven million dollars was paid to the charter schools. We have to understand that right now, we are at a great point with JPS, with a great superintendent, great board of directors, we got great students, as you've seen here today, and we cannot afford to allow others to take the money that JPS has right now. Teachers just finally got a raise, and they need all the money they can so they can become a stronger and stronger school so that not only they hear good in Jackson, Mississippi, but they can become a global institution. And so it is not good to take seven million dollars and take it somewhere else because when students leave JPS, that money is never made up. So I just want us to know it's important that we continue to support JPS, make JPS a stronger school, pay our teachers more and more so our students will be good. And one last thing, we must understand that schools become anchors in their neighborhoods, and when a school is an anchor in a neighborhood, you can rest assured that that neighborhood will be more peaceful and more profitable because there is a school there doing great work. May God bless you.
We appreciate the comments coming from you. As board members, we are not allowed to respond to them, but you can find all of our information on the website. The next item on the agenda, information items. Ms. Marsha Thomas.
Great evening. Vice President Hilliard, board members, Dr. Green, JPS family and friends. At this time, I would like to introduce our student school board representative, Ms. Ari Bradley. Ari is a senior at Mura High School. Ari is fascinated by anatomical aspects of dentistry and plans to pursue a career in the field as a dentist or prostodontist by majoring in biology. She also plans to create a business that will educate and mentor female youth in Mississippi to excel intellectually and financially. Ari will attend Spelman College in the fall. Ladies and gentlemen, Ari Bradley.
Good evening, good evening. Today, I will be presenting some work, some research on the efficacy of early implementation of college and career readiness. That's big words for the usefulness or the effectiveness of implementing college and career readiness skills early in our high school career. So some background and context, you may wonder, okay, what are some factors that contribute or influence our college and our career? I would say the ACT. The ACT, as we all know, is a standardized test that consists of four sections, English, science, mathematics, and reading, and it is basically like an admission guideline for students, high school students, usually seniors and juniors, that really dictates your admission, your recruitment, and your placement in college. So you may ask, how does this benefit students? Why is this important? Why is this significant? It is significant because it gives us money. Scholarships, I know that some of, well, I don't know, I'm, I'm a little younger, but I, I, I know being debt-free is important to many of you in here and also to me, and I feel like being debt-free is one of the greatest advantages to pioneering our college and career life afterwards. So my proposal today, of course, it is sparked by the college and career readiness curriculum. I chose to examine the policy IGB, I believe, and it was basically just those graduation requirements. So under JPS's curriculum, we are required to have one full credit for CCR. I thought this great, and I believe that because my great school district is implementing courses like Mastery Prep, I believe we are on a great track. However, I propose, let's start with some heavier implementation and some earlier and consistent implementation from the ninth grade so we could go ahead and get that access and that familiar, being familiar with the ACT will help open more opportunities for our students. And along with that proposal, I would propose that to track this progress, maybe we can implement an annual ACT every year according to, based on that Mastery Prep courses we take, just to see if it is impacting us in any way to guarantee that success. So some evidence I got, I looked at the ACT Research Department and their studies, and I found that investigating that test prep impact on scores, it is almost guaranteed to improve because we are familiar with the strategy and the skills that we need. It's not all about content always with ACT, it's about being familiar with the strategy and able to use them. Along with that, the condition of college and career readiness, from the ACT Research Department, I found that it is better to, it is better for students who may be in districts that are rooted in communities, communities of poverty, to use those resources to their best ability if we really want to see success. So I decided, that's why I think Mastery Prep may be the best resource we have since it's already implemented in our schools. Those statistics I'm going to compare in the next slide are just some average ACT scores from those 2020 graduates. As we can see, the Mississippi school graduates, of course, the pandemic could be an external factor for some of this dropping, but I wanted us to look at it and compare it to that national average, which we can see is a little above twenty, which is at a twenty point seven, and it only went down to a twenty point six. As we can see, both of these averages ACT scores have decreased, and I think if we want to be on the track to the increase, not necessarily, we don't always have to demean ourselves for our deviation or a far away-ness from that national average, but we can find ways to get to that national average and increase our success by implementing those early and consistent access to courses like Mastery Prep. My overall goals, I got this quote from the Mastery Prep website, and it just stuck with me. It said, "Instead of teaching to the test," which I said, "It's not all about content always." Mastery Prep helps students develop core academic skills that are key to college success and to making four-plus point gains on the ACT. I think the best route to do this, to ensure that we get those point increases that we want, is to make sure that that Mastery Prep course aligns with that corresponding, the corresponding subject or class or standard that we take it. So if it's an English Mastery Prep course, I say do it in English, in English class for the best or the optimal result. Some, lastly, some implications and impact. I think the implementation of college and career readiness curriculums at an earlier time, an earlier stage, which is, would be the ninth grade, will support the core values of Jackson Public Schools. It aligns with our values. This is why. Equity. Equity is not always, it's not about being equal all the time, it's about being adequate. So if we are able to implement those, those resources like Mastery Prep in the ninth grade as early as possible, that's catering to the individualism of our students. If we have excellence, excellence is a habit. Being prepared, I think, is a habit, is a skill, it's a component of excellence. You have to be prepared if you want to succeed. Growth mindset, that hard work that we're getting with those Mastery Prep courses will pay off, and if we see growth, we're more likely to grow even more. The relationship, relationships and the relevance, of course, we're gaining better relationships with our education, we're gaining better relationships with our teachers who are giving us these resources, our district, our community leaders, et cetera. And then that positive and respective culture, I think anywhere education is valued and prioritized and is taken serious is a positive and respective culture. I would open the floor to questions and comments if you do have any.
Thank you so very much for our excellent presentation. Board members, are there questions? Comments?
Just comment, Dr. Buchanan, you got a lot of reasons to be proud tonight. Great job, Ari. What I really love about this is how you've tied it to our core values and our mission here, and I think there's a lot that's worthy of consideration in this, and just the thoughtfulness with which you put this together. Great job. Thank you.
Are there other comments, questions?
I too will echo my colleague on the right, Dr. Luckett, in invoking Dr. Buchanan's name, and the students at Mura that you represent so very well. You keep up the great work.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
Other comments? Factory?
Sure. Got plenty of comments. I'll try to keep it brief. One, every time I hear you speak, I'm just impressed all over again and, and reminded of the brilliance that we have here in our district, but also just you as an individual, how you are just a force already, and, and, you know, I'm not wishing your life away, but I'm excited for all the things that I just know you'll do and the impact that I know you'll make, and the impact and the legacy that you'll leave here in this district, even as you talk about the programming here. You know, often enough, we get folks coming in and, you know, they've got, you know, do away with this, strike this policy, this. It's interesting to hear you talk about something that we're already implementing and thinking of ways to implement it more deeply and to get an even greater return on those investments. I too appreciate the shout-out to the core values. Well done, well done. But something that I've never considered that you said that's ringing in my head is you talked about with relationships, we always talk about people. You talked about a relationship, having a relationship with your education. I've never considered that before, and while, you know, we were pretty thoughtful when we, I believe, when we came up with the core values, that was not an aspect of the relationships piece that occurred to me. And so that's one thing that is just going to be reverberating for me as we talk about the power of relationships, it's not just with individuals, it's also relationships with our work or with our education. And so thank you for leaving that little nugget with me. And something tells me that Mrs. Marshall Thomas has taken some, some good notes about has taken some, some good notes about what ninth grade might look like. And frankly, even younger in grades prior to that. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
We wish you much success in your future. And now, we'll hear from Sandra Robinson, Executive Director of Facilities and Operations.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have black, I'm not used to black right there. Good evening, Vice President, Ms. Barbara Hilliard. Board members, Dr. Green. It's a pleasure to present again the bond update for May 3, 2022. We have the pleasure of presenting the bond date at the first board meeting of each month. In tonight's presentation, we will, we will provide construction updates, the projected board action dates on the remaining projects, the bond financial report, and also an update on the ribbon-cutting events. Ms. Franklin will provide the construction updates. Ms. Franklin?
Good evening, board. Tonight, we'll start at Lake Elementary School. I'm not sure if you recall, in previous meetings, we've seen where two sets of restrooms at Lake have been completed. And this is our third and final set of girls' and boys' restroom. The photo on the left shows kind of the condition of the tile that was there before and the flooring. On the right, we see all of the plumbing inside of the walls has been updated. We have new ceramic tile installed. And at this date, the plumbing fixtures have gone up on the walls here. And it will receive the same finishes as the other two sets, new LED lighting, new epoxy floors, all new partitions and accessories. At Raines Elementary School, we have two sets of girls' and boys' restrooms that are being renovated there. This is the first set that we've been able to turn over to the school for use. It's received all new flooring, all new updated plumbing in the chase walls, new plumbing fixtures, plastic partitions, new ceramic wall tile, all new accessories. At Brinkley Middle School, previously, we've seen where the restrooms are being renovated there. We also have this scope of work in progress. All of the windows on the front elevation that faces Aubrey Mall Drive, all of those windows have been replaced. On the photo on the left, we can see our contractors still making progress at the rear of the school, replacing those windows. At Chastain Middle School, this is one of our middle schools where we have restroom renovations in progress. We have three sets of restrooms there that are being renovated. And before we take a look at the first set that's going to be turned over, I wanted us to take a look at kind of where we started. The restrooms were in, in poor condition. We were missing many of the fixtures. They didn't work. Accessories were missing. A lot of the faucets didn't work. There are multiple holes in the walls. And just overall, they're just dated. But there, we have the first of three sets that's been turned over to the school for use. It's received all new flooring, updated LED lighting. All of the plumbing inside the chase wall has been updated. New steel carriers installed for every fixture. Also at Chastain, in six of our tech labs, there was a old carpeting that, that was in these classrooms. We're able to take that carpet up and replace it with new vinyl flooring in our computer labs. At Powell Middle School, this is another school where we received a lot of negative attention for the condition of the restrooms. Like I said, multiple fixtures just didn't work. They hadn't worked in a long time. And we were kind of just struggling along, making patches, minor patches here, and we would still get so many leaks. Things inside the walls had corroded and rusted over time. But we've been able to update those steel carriers inside the walls, update the plumbing inside the walls. And we're happy, we're extremely happy to say, to date, we've turned over two sets of restrooms for use. At that school, they've received all new updated plumbing inside the chase walls, new steel carriers for every fixture, new plumbing fixtures, new LED lighting. And all of the windows here have been, inside the restrooms, have been replaced also. And contractors are moving forward with the last two sets of restrooms at Powell. At Hughes Field, we're continuing to make progress on our football field there. We're preparing the field to receive artificial turf. We've installed a new drainage system. There's piping all along the field that will carry the water to the perimeter drainage system from the artificial turf. Here, contractors are spreading the crushed stone and sand that, that'll make up the drainage layer. Also, we've installed the stainless steel boxes for our sand pits. These are for our long jump and triple jump track events. All of that concrete walk will get rubberized surface area for the students to run along. And the half-moon concrete area, it'll also receive a rubberized track surface. That's where the high jump event will take place. Also, at our Hardy Hughes Athletic Complex, the next phase that we're preparing for is our baseball and softball field. We're pleased to say these, we have reviewed these documents, and we've made some minor changes with the architect, and we're ready to advertise this project. So, we're looking forward to opening bids toward the end of May for our baseball and softball fields. And they will be in addition to this entire block at Hardy Middle School to make up our Hardy Hughes Athletic Complex. Next, Ms. Robinson will give us an update on our timeline and our financials.
So, I know we're excited to see those pictures, especially of those restroom improvements. So, and we're continuing along. For the next board meeting, we will be bringing the Wales A-PAC renovations a bid for approval. It will be partially funded with ESRA funding. And as Ms. Franklin has stated, we are finalizing the design, the construction documents for the baseball softball fields, and we will be coming to a June board for board action on the baseball softball fields. And the major last project that's remaining is the new field renovations. We have provided on, at the previous board meeting, some context as far as the first bid was $9.5 million. That was over budget. We had allocated $7 million for the project. We're redesigning, looking at some changes that we can make. We're going to be doing some deductive alternates where we are considering reducing the size of the capacity for the seating, but still meeting with the athletic director to make sure it meets our requirements. That will also allow us to reduce some of the restroom requirements as far as the number of toilets that are necessary. But we are using that as a deductive alternate, and so hopefully, we can get better pricing. But we are going to be able to come back with an awardable project. So, we are, in two more weeks, the, the design firm said they will have the revised documents, and then we'll be able to release those for a second bid. Now, we're always excited to provide the update on the financials. As you can look at the orange in the, in the graph, we're continuing to increase the amount expended. As of April 29, we have expended 69% of the funds. So, we're almost there at 70% expended of the bond funds. So, we're excited about continuing to be able to complete these projects. The next three slides give a school-by-school breakout of the budget expenditures encumbered about and the budget balance. I won't read these three slides. And today, we had the pleasure of doing a ribbon-cutting at Green Elementary School. We did have local media coverage, and tonight, you could probably see some pictures on W A B T and W J T V when we get home this evening. We were able to have Dr. Luckett join us, so we're excited about being, for him being able to join us. So, it was a great time seeing the improvements at Green Elementary. It included carpet replacement, restroom renovations, new exterior doors, new playground improvements. It, it was just great to see what the impact and, and the principal really shared what it meant for having those renovations to the academic environment. And that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Board members, are there questions, comments? Dr. Luckett?
Again, no questions. Just as always, excited to see the progress, the steady but sure progress that's being made on all of these projects. And as one of the board members who was here in 2018 when we got this pot issue passed, it's really wonderful to see. And I was excited to be at Green Elementary. And, you know, some of the little things that we improve for our kids that seem little but really are fundamental in providing just a safe and joyful learning environment. I was stunned that we ripped out the carpets of Green Elementary, carpets that had been in the school since, ripped out the carpets of Green Elementary, carpets that had been in the school since it was built in 1959. Sixty-year-old carpets in an elementary school that our children were going to school on. And the beautiful new floors and the beautiful new bathrooms and the future work that's going to happen with the windows. It is just really exciting to see. So, congratulations and kudos, and thank you all for your hard work in bringing this all to fruition. It really matters. We've got a lot more to do. Every time I go to these schools, I think, man, we still got work to do, don't we? But this matters. So, thank you very much.
Other comments, board members? I, I would just like to echo what Dr. Luckett has to say, has said. You know, and to congratulate you two on the outstanding job that you are doing and with this project. It's really exciting to see. I had planned to attend this morning, but something else came up that hindered me from doing that. But thank you for representing the board, Dr. Luckett. Other comments? Dr. Knowles, Tommy Knowles, Director of Recruitment.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Dr. Green, Vice President Hilliard, and members of the board. I actually will be presenting the next three items, the first of which, for information only, is the agreement between Walden University and the Jackson Public School District to provide placement services for student teachers and teacher interns within the Jackson Public School District. Item D is a renewal agreement between Bellhaven University and Jackson Public School District to continue to provide placement for student teachers and teacher interns within Jackson Public School District. And item E is also a renewal agreement between Delta State University and Jackson Public School District to continue to provide placement for student teachers and teacher interns within Jackson Public School District. And so, for this current school year, this past school year, or we're ending this school year, we had 147 student teachers placed within our school district. During the school year, 12 of those student teachers actually accepted positions working in Jackson Public Schools. And then upon graduation, we had an additional 13 to actually accept teaching positions at the elementary level for next school year.
So, so far?
So far. That's right, so far. So, are there any questions?
Are there questions? Well, that's really exciting. And I, I have a question. So, with those numbers, are you prepared to kind of bring us up-to-date on staffing? Is it too early to ask that question? Are we on, you know?
Yes. So, we, we, it's not too early. I don't have the numbers in front of me tonight, so I don't want to give you any incorrect information. But we are making progress. We're working with teachers to make sure that they're getting licenses renewed so we can offer them contracts. We're also actively recruiting new team members to J P S to help fill many of our vacant positions. And then we're just working internally to make sure that we're as close to 100% staff for the beginning of the school year as possible. So, I imagine I'll probably be coming before you in short order to provide an official staffing report. And so, I'll have that information detailed.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. Are there other questions for Dr. Knowles? All right, if there are, thank you so much. Mr. Dave Shellmorrison, next.
All right. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Green, Superintendent. The administration presents to you for review, information-only item, memorandum of agreement between Jackson Public School District and the Children's Defense Fund. This renewed agreement aims to provide professional development and materials for 15 teachers during the month of July. The training is being provided in preparation for our 2023 Summer C D F Freedom School. These teachers will implement components and strategies of the C D F Freedom School throughout the 2022-2023 school year, leading up to full implementation during next summer's program. This professional development is being funded by a U.S. Department of Education Innovative Approaches to Literacy grant. We would now like to build upon the success through of our program that was piloted last summer. Like to build upon that success through extensive training and preparation for full operation of the C D F Freedom School with up to 150 participants for the summer of 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions, board members?
I'm just excited to see this coming to the fore. I deeply appreciate the work of the Children's Defense Fund. And I'm sorry that our own Dr. Jean Hairston isn't here to see this, but I'm glad she'll be able to vote on it when we're back in our next meeting. So, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Thank you. And now, Ms. Faulkner, Director of Partners in Education.
Great evening, Mrs. Hilliard, board members, Dr. Green. I present for your information tonight consideration to renew our agreement with Junior League of Jackson, which currently provides teacher mini-grant opportunities for all teachers in the district. We average about $100,000 in grant awards each year. Teachers can write a competitive grant application for up to $3,000. Team grants such as third grade, English department, so forth, can write up to $5,000. And if it's a school-wide initiative, up to $10,000. This is provided at no cost to the district.
Thank you. Are there questions, comments?
Board members, that's item H, of course.
H, I was looking at that.
Item H.
Okay, I think you have the next item on the agenda. Awesome.
Yes, ma'am, I do. I'm also presenting for information only our renewal of our agreement with the Mississippi Food Network. Currently, they provide, with partners, funding it, our backpack and monthly food pantry program. We, this year, have operated in seven elementary schools for the backpack program, which provides weekly backpacks to scholars and families in need, non-perishable food items. And in seven of our elementary, middle, and high schools collectively, we have a monthly food pantry that also distributes non-perishable foods on a monthly basis to our families in need. Pending a partner coming on board, they're also extending to increase the distributions with the monthly food pantry to include fresh fruit and produce.
Okay. Thank you. Are there comments, questions?
Just more kudos. Thank you, Ms. Faulkner, for the good work that you do and for all that goes on in Partners in Education and the significance of this work with the Mississippi Food Network, things that go unseen in our district. It really, again, just good work. It makes a difference in the lives of these children, and thanks to our partners in the Junior League and Mississippi Food Network for making this possible.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes. Other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we have information, I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself, Ms. Marshall.
Good evening again. The administration presents for information the memorandum of understanding between Microsoft Corporation and Jackson Public Schools. Under the terms of this MOU, the district will participate in the Microsoft Philanthropies Technology Education and Literacy in Schools TILS program, which is designed to introduce computer science into schools. The TILS program will pair trained computer science professionals from across the technology industry who volunteer their time to work with classroom teachers to team teach computer science concepts and skills. The goal of this collaboration is to increase access to computer science education for selected students in the seven high schools. These students will be provided computational thinking and problem-solving skills, which are necessary for them to become well-rounded citizens and possess 21st century skill sets necessary to complete, to compete in the global economy. We had 130 scholars and seven teachers that participated in the TILS program this academic school year. And this concludes this added item, and I'll take any questions or comments that you have.
Wonderful. You're increasing that number for next year.
Yes, we are trying to get additional volunteers to come on to TILS. So as Microsoft recruit additional volunteers, we are able to add additional classes.
So Microsoft has to recommend these persons?
Yes. Yes. Microsoft selects the volunteers that work with the teachers, and from those, from those volunteers, they are paired with a school.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions? Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you.
Information, action items. Dr. Green?
Yes, ma'am, I have the first one. The administration recommends the approval of Info Action Item A, which is the approval of the DeCello-Levitt-Gutslar engagement letter. The Jackson Public School District seeks to retain and employ DeCello-Levitt-Gutslar to investigate and evaluate any potential claims. The investigation will involve reviewing relevant documents, databases, and records to determine the extent of contamination in Lake Heiko and the surrounding area, and the relationship of any discovered contamination to Entergy's activities. We are, we are pleased with the continued work, board members of, of our partners and in working with the Environmental Protection Agency, Region Four, and others to do the recommended and necessary testing of the, of the Lake Heiko property. And that, that work has continued. There have been several rounds of discussion around exactly how to test and what information needs to be gathered in that. And in response to board member and community member questions and, and concerns around just our positioning in these discussions, we thought it necessary to engage with a firm like DeCello-Levitt and Gutslar, who has national, perhaps international, but certainly national experience in these types of, of, of issues. And so they will be advising and, and supporting us in our continued testing and sampling of the property, just to determine if there's a need to engage further. And, and so we're bringing, we've been working on this agreement over some time just to get to the right balance of, of terms, and so we're ready to bring this to you for your consideration and approval. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Board members?
Superintendent Green, I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
And I really would like to thank you and the administration, the board attorney, along with Dr. Sevak and Mrs. Hilliard, presidents, and Attorney Johnson, fellow board member, for your diligence and your consideration for the health and safety of the people of the city of Jackson, of whom we are called to serve directly, their children, but the neighborhoods and communities that children come from is also impart our responsibility. And I really thank you.
Yes, sir.
For being able to discern that.
Appreciate that.
Okay, are there other comments?
Ms. Hilliard, I move we approve Information Action Item A.
Second.
All right. You making a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, you second. All right, it has been moved and second that approval of Action Item A. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Are there any nays? No nays, there being none, the motion is passed, is approved, I'm sorry. Okay. B, Larissa Seymour.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board Vice President, Mrs. Hilliard, board members, Dr. Green, colleagues, and JPS community. First of all, board members, we sincerely want to thank you for your support of the really important measures that we implemented to minimize the spread of COVID-19. However, due to recently enacted legislation, the Office of the General Counsel is recommending for immediate suspension, Board Policy GAAJ, to come into compliance with this law. Any questions?
Are there questions? Comments?
Attorney Moore, if you would, just name the, the, the issue that the, the law has caused us to react to.
Absolutely. So recently, House Bill, I think 1509, was signed into law by the governor, which makes it illegal for us to discriminate on persons based on their vaccination status. As you all know, our previous policy required either our employees to be vaccinated or submit to weekly testing for COVID. We still encourage and recommend that people get vaccinated, receive testing for COVID-19 because we are still in the midst of a pandemic. However, we can no longer require it.
Okay.
And the district is still offering tests into our students and our staff. It's free and it's available for them to participate in, but they have to participate in it voluntarily.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Are there comments, other questions? There none, is there a motion to approve this information?
So moved.
Second. It has been moved, moved by Dr. Lockett, second by Ms. Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays, none, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, Regine?
Dr. Scott, yes, sir.
Rajini Scott.
Tell me again how you pronounce your name.
Rajini.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board Vice President, Ms. Hilliard, Superintendent, Dr. Green, board members, and JPS family. The administration recommends for the approval of the 2223 Agreement between 806 Technologies, Title I Crate, and the Jackson Public School District for maintaining, management, and monitoring of all federal compliance documentation.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Are there questions? No questions, can we have a motion?
Move that we approve Information Action Item C.
Okay, second. All right, it's been moved and properly seconded that we would approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposals? None? Okay, the next item on the agenda is Ms. Talitha Bingham-Gibbs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board Vice President, Ms. Hilliard, board members, Dr. Green, and the JPS family. The Office of Exceptional Education Services is presenting for information, action, the collaborative agreements between Heinz County Human Resource Agency and the Jackson Public School District for school year 21, 22, and 22, 23. The purpose of this renewal agreement is to define the collaboration roles, responsibilities, and transition activities of Heinz County Human Resource Agency Head Start and Jackson Public School District by approving the ability, the availability and quality of special education services for children ages three through five.
Thank you. Dr. Bingham. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the Information Action Item?
Madam Chair, I so move.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded that the motion, the item is approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposals? None? Motion approved. Okay, the next person is Dr. Cormac.
Good evening, Board Vice President, Hilliard, members of the board, Dr. Green. The administration seeks the approval of the JPS Heinz Early Learning Collaborative Grant Agreement with the Mississippi Department of Education. As you saw in our highlights reel video, the Jackson Public School District is a proud recipient of a $9,195,000 Early Learning Collaborative Grant to expand access to our high-quality pre-kindergarten program. The ELC, as it is called, is a competitive grant process which provides state matching funds to support local pre-kindergarten partnerships. We're excited to partner with Jackson State University's Lottie Thornton Early Childhood Center, Little Saints Academy, and the Heinz Community Human Resource Agency, which is our region's Head Start provider. We'll use these funds to match, our matching funds, to administer, implement, and monitor, and evaluate our pre-kindergarten program, improving the overall quality for these experiences offered to four-year-old scholars, and to extend developmentally appropriated educational programs and services. As a bit of history, over the past three years, the district has expanded the number of pre-K scholars served from 580 when we launched our strategic plan to 900, I'm sorry, to 764 this school year. The grant will allow the district to grow exponentially, this pre-kindergarten programming, to educate more than 1,200 early scholars next fall. So we're very excited. This is in alignment with Commitment One, a strong start of our strategic plan, and we know that research shows that scholars who engage in these high-quality early learning experiences perform better in school and complete more years of education. With the board's indulgence, I want to acknowledge members of our grant writing and interview team, Dr. Daphne Low, who serves as our Director of Early Childhood of our preschool, Mr. David Shomar, who's our grant manager, Ms. Chelsea Luster, who is representing Heinz Community, or Heinz County Human Resource Agency, and she is the Associate Head VP, and then Dr. Heather Denae Wilcox with Jackson State University, also a proud JPS parent, and then our directors of the JSU Lottie Thornton Center, Dr. Kenesha Bennett, and Ms. Amy Berry, the Director at Little Saints. We want to acknowledge each of them for their contributions, as well as our central office team, Dr. Kim Smith, who helped to support the grant, and our dynamic duo, our elementary assistance suits, Dr. Grigsby and Mrs. Woody, who contributed to the effort. Thank you so much. And my, my colleague in crime, Dr. William Merrick, who was our champion for Commitment One for the prior two years of our strategic plan implementation, who laid the groundwork for this pretty exciting work.
Thank you for that report. Let me add to your report that this program was singled out at the meeting, the Mississippi Department of Education, last week. Jackson's pre-program was singled out. Of course, I applaud it.
Nice, absolutely. We're excited because we'll become the largest collaborative in the state.
Yes.
So we'll, we'll blaze a trail.
Yes. Okay, are there other comments, questions?
Congratulations to everyone, what a big deal. And board, so excited to see us really fulfilling that, that goal to jump into this early learning and to, to expand it and to, to provide that as an opportunity for more and more children in our district. And I'm proud to be able to double-dip as a board member for JPS, but also my JSU colleagues out there, the good work that they're doing.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there other comments, questions?
I'm just excited, I'm just extremely excited because a strong start is so very vitally important, and if we can catch them early and young and put in them what is necessary, I'm, I'm just seeing where success is going. I mean, just what we have tonight, what we've already seen, and now we're finna start even earlier. I'm just so excited and congratulations, and, and I, just like, Dr. Lockett, I want to double-dip as well with Little Saints Academy, that's my church's daycare, I'm so excited, just excited to hear that name up in there. But anyway, God is so good for what is happening in Jackson Public Schools. I'm excited to be a part of it, and I'm glad of being this season.
So, before you vote on this, and, and with your indulgence, I, I do want to ask, Dr. Cormac, how many times did we apply for this previously? Did we apply for the, a collaborative?
We applied once before.
Once before. I want to be really clear that this wasn't a gimme.
Yeah.
We didn't just submit our name and get this collaborative. Like there's, there, there were prerequisites in terms of collaboration and what needed to be included and, and just kind of the scope of, of our collaborative, so there was a pretty high bar. But there's also clearly a huge need. Our team rose to the occasion, rode to, let me monitor my language, a, a very well-done application. And, and it was funded. And again, as Dr. Cormac said, we'll be one of the, we'll be the largest collaborative in the state, and appropriately so. And so we're already seeing, to your point, you know, what happens when you provide scholars with amazing experiences. And so I'm just excited that we will be in a place where, you know, our interventions are lessened, where we start much, much sooner, get our scholars on the right track, and then when they're in third grade, there isn't a conversation about whether or not they can pass the third grade gate, third grade assessment. That's not a conversation.
No.
We're taking care of that in kindergarten and first grade. By third grade, they're, they're administering the test, you know, to, to others. And so just want to be real clear on what it took to get here. Lots of hours, lots of, you know, stressing to get this application just so, but it paid off. And so just excited that we're able to bring this to you for your acceptance and approval.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Okay. Is there a motion to accept, approve this information? Is there a motion to approve this information?
Madam Chair, I move that this board approves this collaboration as stated by the presenter, Dr. Cormac.
Second.
Second. Ms. Thompson, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nays, none, there being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Item Finance. Is she here? Is she here?
Keep going on your screen.
Okay. All of the Consent Agenda Items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we have had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? Okay, if no further questions, Consent Agenda Items. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items?
So moved.
So moved. Am I going backwards?
Oh, you're right.
All right, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there being, uh, the motion, there being no nays, the motion is approved. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Item Personnel. All of the?
General.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm omit, okay. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. 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 Next, we have the Consent Agenda, Agenda Items, uh-oh, or? General, the general, uh-huh, I'm sorry. We have Consent Agenda, all of the Consent Agenda Items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we have had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? Okay, no further questions? Board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Finance Items? A through, okay?
I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items General.
Is it second?
Second.
Okay, second. It's been moved and second that we will approve, that we approve these items. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, there are no nays, so the motion is approved. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Item Personnel. All of the Consent Agenda Items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we have had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions regarding personnel? Board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second that we will approve that, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays, none, there being none, the motion is approved. Is there a consideration to hold an executive session?
Ms. Hilliard, I move that we close the meeting to consider going into executive session.
Okay, it has been, okay, second. All right, it has been moved and second that we will close the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, nays, there being none, uh, the motion is approved. Is there a motion to hold? Okay. All right.
I want to thank everyone.
Good night, everybody, thank y'all.